At the time, they have rubber stamped the city manager's proposals and over 93% of those votes were unanimous. If elected, I will use my 35 years of business and accounting experience to ensure your tax money is spent wisely serving the public. For nearly two decades, I've served as the financial controller of HOX automation, employing over 1,400 people in high-paying manufacturing jobs in Oxnard. I have committed to bringing more such jobs to our community along with performance and innovation to City Hall. You may have seen my wife and me gathering signatures to successfully place measures F, L, M, and N onto the members' ballot. These measures demonstrate the policies I will advance as your representative. Open, transparent, accessible government that actually works, keeps its promises, and delivers quality services at affordable costs. In addition, I support attracting and retaining local businesses as well paying jobs, fixing streets and alleys, and cleaning up parks, roadways, and public landscaping, protecting health and safety, addressing homelessness with support for the faith-based community, and better education for our children. I would be honored if you'd vote for Erin Starr for Oxnard City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Ronald Arwahel.
Hello, thank you very much. And hello, Oxnard. My name is Ronald Arwahel and I'm running for Oxnard City Council District Three. I was born and raised in South Oxnard and I graduated from UC County University with a master's in public affairs in local government management and public finance administration. I then, after graduating, worked in the public sector in both municipal and federal governments. I'm campaigning on three priorities: improving our infrastructure, working with local leaders, and investing in Oxnard's future. Now, we'll have a chance to talk about the dollars and cents of my proposals. But I want to talk about a few of the people I've been able to meet as I go around the district. Now, I've met and conversed with Sandy from Rio Lendo, who was focusing on the possible cuts to the fire department and if the response times and the turnover that's in the department is going to impact the safety of that neighborhood. I've also talked to Lisa in West Village, who complained to me that the city chose basically the wrong trees for the neighborhood and now they're having to pay with uneven sidewalks and driveways. I've also been able to talk with Joe in La Colonia, who unfortunately is not hearing enough from council and was excited to see someone going throughout the neighborhood. I look forward to further explaining my views on how to invest in Oxnard's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Oscar Madrigal.
Hello, everyone. My name is Oscar Madrigal and I am a city council member. I was elected to the city council in 2016. I was born and raised here in the city of Oxnard. I have lived in the Colonia neighborhood since I was four years old. I am a proud product of the city. I attended the local schools here. I attended Lemonwood Elementary, Fremont Intermediate School, and Channel Islands High School. After Channel Islands High School, I went on to Cal Lutheran where I got my bachelor's degree in history and a master's degree in public policy and administration. After completing my education in Cal Lutheran, I have been a high school educator for the last 13 years. I am committed to working not only right now with the president as a member of the Oxnard City Council, but as well as with our future and working with high school students. I am grateful for everything that the city has done for me. Growing up was difficult, but now it's my turn to give back to the city and to give back to the youth. So hopefully, one day, they'll be able to give back to our future generations. I have been endorsed by the Oxnard Chamber of Commerce, by SCIU 721, by the Central Coast Labor Council, by Local 585, Local 805, the Ventura County Democratic Central Committee, the Good Club, the Ventura County Young Democrats, the Oxnard Peace Officers, Cause Action Fund.
Gonna have to stop you there. Thank you. And for the audience, I'm just gonna take a moment to share a screen here to show you what the district map looks like. We are meeting the candidates tonight for District Three, and that is this yellow section over here that you could see on the Oxnard map. So just want to give everybody a little perspective where that runs to. And with that, let's get back to hearing from our candidates. We're gonna start with Ronald. So Ronald, the first question, we'll begin with you, is tell us a little bit about the specific things you have done to serve the neighborhoods such as Colonia and Rose Park, and how will you engage with residents in this part of the district?
Yes, I can tell you that with my experience on the East Village Neighborhood Council, we were able to, from the start with the chair of the Neighborhood Council, to put on again the neighborhood cleanups that had been happening every six to nine months. And just getting that on the ground and getting it moving was a great opportunity to get involved with the neighborhood that I love and have lived in for the last few years, and I'm so grateful for that opportunity. In regards particularly to Rose Park and La Colonia, I'm letting you know that I will put the same amount of dedication that I have with East Village with all of District Three. And so unfortunately, I haven't been able to look out into the other neighborhoods because I've been so focused on getting East Village Neighborhood Council assisting as secretary treasurer and being in a leadership position to make sure that we can get this neighborhood going. As someone who's going to be on the city council, I hope to assist and to be proactively involved and not just attending and participating in their events. They want to see city council actively promoting Neighborhood Council. And though it has been great to see the city core and to see city Oxnard sponsorship of some events, it would be great if there was a little bit more financial and administrative support for all the good help or all the good work that all the Neighborhood Councils are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Oscar, same question here. As far as the things you've done to serve the neighborhoods of Colonia and Rose Park, and how will you engage those residents?
Thank you for the question. I live in La Colonia neighborhood and it is helping out in the community. It is going to events. It is going, talking to residents in the neighborhood. La Colonia is a very large neighborhood and actually it's kind of divided into three different smaller neighborhoods. And it's interacting with all three different parts of the neighborhood and, you know, finding things that we could find in common. It's working individually with all three different groups in the neighborhood and, you know, getting things done. And Rose Park, Rose Park meets every month as a neighborhood. They have Neighborhood Watch. They're probably arguably the strongest neighborhood in the whole city. They meet, they have end-of-the-year celebrations, they have coffee with a cop at least twice a year, they have neighborhood cleanups twice a year. They're very proactive with them. You know, they have a problem, they reach out ASAP. With them, you know, we worked on getting them a walking track at Thompson Park. Previously, it was lighting at the park and currently it's a new playground for their park at Thompson Park. Rose Park is very united and it's a great neighborhood and it's like something that all neighborhoods should desire to be. It's not about financing and how rich the people are, it's about caring about their neighborhood and caring about their neighbors. Thank you.
Erin, we'll wrap up this question with you. Talk about the specific things you've done to serve the neighborhoods of Colonia and Rose Park. How will you engage these residents?
Sure. Well, my participation in the city goes back a long way. Probably the first time I had a real impact on those neighborhoods was when my wife and I were fighting the huge utility rate increases that were being proposed in Oxnard at the time. They wanted to raise our utility rates by $750 per year for a typical household. And we pushed back. We reached out to those neighborhoods. We made sure that the city council chambers was flooded with people to protest the rate increase. We pushed back. We got the city council to not adopt some of the rate increases, but they still adopted a really large rate increase for wastewater. We worked together with the folks in those neighborhoods to get an initiative qualified on the ballot to rescind the rate increase, qualify it for the ballot, and successfully voted in favor of it. So starting off with that, I have a very open-door policy. I talk with everybody that I possibly can. We've got measures on the ballot this time that we've worked with people throughout those neighborhoods to make it easier for our streets to get repaired, make it easier for businesses to open, for people to fix up their homes and improve upon their homes. So basically to bring more transparency to City Hall. Many of the sort of needs and requirements that are in those neighborhoods are needs that are felt throughout the city. So we're here to make sure that they get all the services that they require and they get treated well. And that's one of our batteries, everybody well.
Thank you. Oscar, we're gonna start the next question with you. Talk to us about your plans for housing in Oxnard, increasing affordable housing, making sure that there's a readily available supply of apartments and that apartment complexes are also up to code, those that are already here. Share with us your views.
Thank you. The vacancy rate in general in the city of Oxnard is relatively low. Because of this, you know, rent increases simply by supply and demand. We desperately need housing, all sorts of housing. We need all types of housing for all our residents here in the city. We have a younger generation that is gonna go out and get an education and not be able to live in the city. So we will be losing, you know, a large tax base. Planning for the city is we have to grow and we have to grow vertically. You know, a lot of the open land is done because of sores, so we're gonna have to be more dense and we have to go up. At the same time though, you know, it does create other issues as parking, but we need to improve our public transportation as a whole. So my plan as a council member, I know that in District Three, there will be new apartments being built in La Colonia. And then that would be public housing and then there should be a large, another large housing project in East Village. And then with that in mind, you know, we also have Wagon Wheel and we also have the future of the downtown. So with any of those buildings, we're gonna have to build vertically and we probably got to be a little bit more dense than what we would like to be, but it's for the betterment of our community.
Thank you. Erin, same question to you. If you're elected, what plans do you have to bring apartment complexes up to code? What are your views on increasing affordable housing?
So often, we talk about affordable housing rather than making housing affordable. And one of the things that makes housing unaffordable is just the extremely high cost of building a home here in Oxnard. The permitting process is just completely broken. And it takes years and years and years to get a house built or to do an add-on to a house. It really reduces the supply stock of housing available. And that puts upward pressure on housing costs. In addition, we have issues where we have insufficient jobs out there that pay high enough. Part of the equation, having housing more affordable, is to make it easier for people to earn a living here. So the higher incomes that people can make will make it possible to afford these houses because let's face it, we're competing with other folks that want to live in a desirable community. Over time, we have, you know, older folks that are moving in, retiring here, they bring in higher incomes and they put pressure to make those housing prices go up. I'm not really a big fan of high-density housing. I see what is planned here in this community. I'm thinking of the high-density housing that's planned near Comino del Sol and Rose. And I think the parking is gonna be a huge problem there. And I don't think the city is taking the time to think about the parking consequences and how that will affect the nearby neighborhoods. So I think that we need to make sure that housing is made affordable rather than having affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronald, same question to you. What are your plans to make sure apartment complexes are up to code? And what are your plans for increasing affordable housing?
Yes, thank you for that question. Unfortunately, I think also the question is how did we get to this severe of a problem? We had the last five to 10 years, especially after the 2008 recession, to figure out what needed to be done. Unfortunately, council didn't plan and invest in the future of the neighborhood, the district, and the city. One of the easy ways is to have a certain percentage of affordable units in all of these new developments. A lot of people are asking, why aren't they there? I'm not, I'm not going to say that I'm for a, what people have proposed, a 15% level for affordable housing, but I can say that in the soon-to-be-developed also high school in that neighborhood around there, that I am willing to vote to have a higher-than-average of the previous council's affordable housing level. We need to be looking at not just in four-year term limits, we have to be looking at the next 40 years so that affordable housing is not gonna be questioned, it's gonna be something that's gonna be available to all, from apartments to duplex, complexes, and single-family housing. We've got to look at a variety of housing opportunities so that people stay in the city from birth until old age. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronald. We're gonna stay with you for the next question. We're gonna start off by pointing out that District Three is somewhat very much in the flight path of planes taking off from Camarillo Airport and even planes that are starting their descent into the Oxnard Airport. So the question for you, Ronald, is how will you protect Oxnard and Camarillo and some of the unincorporated areas from increased noise and air pollution that could come from an expanded Camarillo Airport?
Yes, I think that's the perfect segue into talking about my second priority of working with local leaders. Not only with the district and when I go to church in downtown, which is in District Four, I do hear that every 30 minutes to an hour, and so it is a noise nuisance. You know, just the power of a lot of people of Oxnard and also in Camarillo, who it's gonna be affecting, and anyone in the unincorporated areas with the county board of supervisors. We need to be making sure that we're proactive, that we have those stats about the decibel levels, about the frequency, and comparing it to other cities. I remember that I was working in city administration, that we're looking at similar cities to make sure that our argument is going to be there, both in numbers-wise, to the people that are going to be making the decision, and also emotionally, that there are the people power to say that they will vote people out if they don't make sure that at least, I'm not saying I'm gonna eliminate all of that noise complaints, but at least reduce it or minimize that level. Thank you.
You're welcome. Erin, same question to you. What are some of the plans you'll try to push to reduce noise and air pollution from an expanded Camarillo Airport? How will you protect your neighborhood?
Well, thankfully, in our neighborhood, and I live in East Village, just like Ron does, there's really not any noise that we hear from aircraft. If there's a plan to expand the airport, if they want to have bigger planes, I can see that becoming a problem. We definitely need to talk to, you know, the authorities in other cities and talk to the FAA and make sure that we're not, you know, taken advantage of. Because I think there's this belief in other cities, and many years ago, I used to, I didn't live in Oxnard, many years ago, I lived in City Valley, but there were folks that didn't think that Oxnard deserved a fair shake. And I think that's a problem. I don't think that we should be, you know, the dumping ground for other people's problems. And I think that we just need to be better at standing up for ourselves. I mean, one of the things that happened to us years ago was that they decided to impose, you know, a particular arena numbers on us that wasn't used for other cities. So we ended up having more of the low-income housing requirements here, more than our share versus other cities. So, you know, I believe that what we need to do is we need to mitigate any negative externalities caused by airports. So somehow, they need to compensate the city for any damages that they do for us. So I'll work very hard to make sure that we get a fair shake and that we're treated well.
Oscar will wrap up with you on this question. How will you protect Oxnard and Camarillo areas from increased noise and air pollution if the airport expands in Camarillo?
Thank you. It will be a big safety issue for the local high schools that are right at the Camarillo Airport. But it's directly going to the airport authority. On the airport authority, you have two city of Oxnard council members on that board. You have two county supervisors and you have two city council members from the city of Camarillo. It's having a discussion with all six of those individuals, three of which represent the city, actually four of them represent the city of Oxnard because one of the board supervisor members is Kelly Long, which she represents part of South Oxnard. So, you know, we have a vested interest in what happens, not only at the Camarillo Airport, but our airport as well. For many years, you know, the Camarillo Airport seems to be getting the nicer things while the Oxnard Airport is just kind of there. And it's something that we need to fight for as a community. Sometimes I go to my backyard and I do hear the aircraft noise. So I see some of the disadvantages, but just as planes begin to descend. So I could just imagine living in the downtown where you're able to hear more of that noise. So it does make for us to stand up for ourselves and talk to our local representatives or some of my colleagues in the city to make sure that we get a fair deal.
Thank you. Gonna move on to the next question. Erin, you're up first. The question is about Measure E. What is your position on Measure E? And if you are elected, what kind of policies will you put in place to promote accountability and transparency, assuming Measure E passes, if it does pass?
Well, Measure, I'm opposed to Measure E. Measure E will double our city sales tax rate from one and a half percent to 3%. It will make Oxnard the highest city tax rate in California during a pandemic, when Oxnard families and small businesses can least afford it. And Measure E's taxes go to the city's, you know, general slush fund with no guarantees on how politicians spend the money. And I think it's just wrong for politicians to ask Oxnard voters for a blank check at a time when too many are without a paycheck. Now, if the folks do vote for Measure E, I'm gonna make sure that the money is spent, you know, on what will save us money in the long run. What we need to spend money to save in the long run is to fix our roads. Because what happens is that we've delayed for so long, repair and maintenance of roads that it becomes much more expensive to maintain it, and that's been a problem for years. If we spend the money on the roads first, then we're gonna have more money in the long run for other purposes. So that's my belief. I think that any extra money should as much as possible used to pay down debts so that we can reduce our future costs. And I think we just need to be more responsible for our money. Right now, we're not responsible for our money. That's why we're coming back to the voters again after 12 years after having voted for an increase of taxes with Measure O back in 2008. So this spendthrift nature, our savings, to stop.
Thank you. Oscar, same question. As far as what is your position on Measure E? And if you are elected, how will you, what policies will you put in place to promote accountability and transparency?
Thank you. I am for Measure E. The city has been struggling for years and, you know, if Measure E does not pass, you know, we will continue to struggle. It'll only get worse for the city as a whole. If I am elected, I would focus on things that are visible to residents of the city. Being, you know, parks, medians, roads, tree trimming, things like that go a long way because it shows residents that their money is being put to good use. As something else that I would like to do would be for reserves. At the end of the day, we have to build or we have to begin to build a stronger future for the city. We need to be sustainable, not only in the short term, but in the long term. And lastly, you know, we have community services. They've been cut so much over the last, you know, five to six years that we need to give back to our residents. And, you know, we need to provide these services for people that live in the city who are in need of these type of services, be it sports, be it art, whatever it may be, just to help them during this difficult time.
Thank you. Ronald, please share with us what your position is on Measure E? And if you're elected, what policies you'll put in place to promote accountability and transparency?
Yes, you know, I look very hard at Measure E and I am, though, reluctantly voting for Measure E. We have to fix the problems that this past council has not solved and we have to also look for the future. You know, what I tell people, what my first priority is and what most people ask me, what are you gonna do? What is your priority in terms of the budget? It's road repair. You know, we've got to be looking at not just a short-term investment of making those roads look nice, but on the long-term impact to our cars and automobiles. You know, accidents can occur, maintenance is going to increase if we don't repair our roads. And that's just one of the easiest ways to say. Unfortunately, this council has not prioritized road repair. Based on a 2016 community report, unfortunately, the latest on the city website, it was the fifth most funded priority. Based on the 2019 report of fiscal year 18 expenditures, it was only one out of every eight dollars. I'm not gonna tell the voters of District Three that's gonna be the number one, but I think one out of eight means it's not even a priority. It's gonna be at least in the top three and it's gonna be in my first priority. You know, another thing in regards to my introduction, as I talked about Sandy with regards to fire department, we need to make sure that they're being funded at a level that the people can rely on their services if an emergency were to happen.
Thank you. Oscar, we're gonna start the next question with you. Let's talk about business in the city of Oxnard and trying to attract business. We also have to help businesses that are struggling after the pandemic. So Oscar, if you're elected, what are your plans for helping businesses recover from COVID and the pandemic? What will you do to try and attract new businesses to Oxnard?
Thank you for the question. District Three, we have a lot of small businesses all along Cooper Road and Colonia Road. These businesses are struggling. Some businesses have gone out of business on those two particular streets. It's all small business down that area. Fortunately, a new business just opened up just last week. It's giving the extra hand, you know, making sure that they have all the information needed in case, you know, there is, you know, assistance out there. We have gone out, the city has gone out and reached to small businesses during the pandemic to, for assistance, if they needed assistance, getting them all the information from the county. So, you know, it's helped some. You know, can we do more? Yes, we can. We need to go out there and, you know, continue to help out the mom-and-pop shops because at the end of the day, their money stays here. As far as attracting new businesses, you know, we have great weather. We have a lot of the things that are desirable for a business to come here. We have the land. We have Sacquioke Farms. Hopefully, you know, it keeps attracting more and more business to the area. It attracts, it brings jobs, it brings training, and it brings, you know, it brings great relief to our residents because it brings them hope. So hopefully, you know, we are able to attract more businesses to the city.
Thank you. Ronald, same question to you. What will you do to help attract new businesses to Oxnard and also help the local economy recover from COVID?
Yes, you know, as someone who worked in city government, I looked at how the city turned vacant property into a thriving commercial slash residential slash commerce area. Not unlike the Sacquioke Farms project. They use a concept called placemaking in that we should have different types of businesses so that there are a variety of people having multiple choices when they go to an area. Now, it's great that Amazon is gonna come to the area, but we've got to be looking also at the other businesses that will be baking up that lab because people don't just want to come to Oxnard to work and for the great weather. They also want to come here to play for recreation. And so obviously, we have the beaches, we have River Park, but we have another destination area that could be there. You know, it would help with the parking. Amazon is gonna be there mostly during the day or during business hours. And then you have restaurants. You can have residential. I don't know if the city's gonna be innovative enough to have stuff like that, but I'm just letting you know that I'll be bringing in a variety of ideas, looking at the newest ways that are already out there, not looking at past ideas that may or may not work for the city.
Thank you. Erin, we'll wrap up with you. Tell us about some of your plans to attract new businesses to Oxnard and to help local businesses recover from COVID.
Sure. I mean, business is what really interests me and it's my background. Now, my company, roughly almost 25 years ago, we moved to Oxnard because it was possible to do so back then. Our permit system wasn't broken back then. In our case, we were actually able to submit architectural plans and have a 400,000-square-foot building built with a certificate of occupancy in 10 months. 10 months. You can't possibly do that today in Oxnard. We started with 400 employees. We now have over a million square feet and we have 1,400 employees. And one of my key issues is I want to fix this broken permit system, which all I've heard is excuses for year after year after year, to the point where I actually To the point where I actually wrote Measure F. Now Measure F, which is on the ballot. It fixes city hall's broken permit bureaucracy by streamlining the permit process. It helps Oxnard attract high paying jobs. It will increase revenues without raising taxes. It'll help us build housing that's affordable and bring more retail stores to Oxnard so we can shop locally. As far as, you know, COVID goes, we need to make sure that we keep the city safe. We need to treat people fairly and we shouldn't be sacrificing people's livelihoods while we're trying to make people safe. But there is so much more we can do to attract business. Local government knows nothing about business and how to attract business. Businesses know what they want and what they want is they want a process that works for them so they can choose to come here.
Thank you. Ronald, we'll move to the next question. This has come up in many cities. It's an issue across the country, actually. And that's the question of racial inequality. In Oxnard, what are your specific policies and philosophy regarding? Defunding the police, uh, public safety, racial inequality, social justice? Share with us your things.
Yes, um, you know, as a person of color, um, it is very personal to me. Um, when my family had the talk with me, actually, it wasn't about the birds and the bees. Um, it was in regards to what to do, how to act if a police officer approaches you. Now, when I worked for the city of Altoona, um, there were 40, 30 to 40 full-time people. And what scared me at first the most um, was working closely with the police and the fire. Um, you know, being a management analyst, I had to work closely with all the department heads, which was basically half of the city staff. You know, um, that, um, that was actually, that emotion was misplaced for me. And um, they treated me um, based on the, my work and how it looked. Um, and what it did for this residents and the city. And I'm going to try, uh, my hardest to make sure that both the city. And the public safety is going to have that same mindset with the people of Oxnard. To make sure that um, that we're treating everyone based on what they are doing and not how they looked. Um, you know, that's, it's, that's a very personal question. I'm glad you brought that up. And hopefully I'm going to be able to bring my personal experience with that on council.
Thank you. Oscar, same question. Share with us your views about defunding the police, Black Lives Matter, eliminating racial injustice.
Um, well, in general, you know, uh, my. Grandfather uh, moved here to Oxnard in the 1960s. He bought his first home along with my uncle here in La Colonia, 1976. Um, as soon as they moved in, you know, people were shooting up heroin in our backyard. Um, La Colonia neighborhood has been in the neighborhood for over 100 years. It is a neighborhood who, you know, while in tenses and purposes was created based on segregation. And you know, there's a famous uh, school court case with the Oxnard School District in Juan Soria. So you know, the history of racial segregation, racial oppression is here in this neighborhood. So you know, uh, being elected, it was, it brought, you know, great pleasure to me, not only as um. Uh, for individual merit, but uh, for the neighborhood as a whole. Um, I was uh, the first and only uh, colonial resident to ever be elected to city council. Um, I'm not the only one who's ever lived in La Colonia. If I'm the only current resident that has ever served on the Oxnard City Council. Um, but um, you see uh, that segregation that still exists today. As far as defunding the police, um, I know the police have a difficult job in front of them. But at the end of the day, you know, we all want to feel safe. And you know, they are putting their lives at risk as well. So you know, it's a, it's a very delicate situation when it comes to the whole defend the police.
Thank you. Aaron, please share with us your thoughts about defunding the police, Black Lives Matter, eliminating racial inequality.
I think we need to treat people with respect and recognize that we as human beings are all children of God. And I try to set an example for others of treating people equally and fairly. And I believe that our local police does a good job of that. I don't hear about uh, problems with racial strife with our local police. We've got well-trained uh, people. We don't have the types of riots that other cities have experienced. Because our police are fair with people and I think there should be the presumption that they are fair with folks. As far as, you know, the level of spending goes, I, I believe that our police need to be well-funded. I also believe that we need to spend efficiently. And that's one of the areas that, that I want to look at. I want to know, how do we get more bang for our buck? And that's my focus. I think that the citizens of our community are law-abiding. They support our police. And I think that uh, they have a tough job. And we need to treat them fairly, but we also need to treat ourselves fairly. Uh, when it comes to making sure that we don't overspend trying to accomplish uh, safety for, for the public here in Oxnard.
Okay, thank you. And uh, we're going to go ahead and begin with Oscar on the next question. I want to take a little bit of a step back, Oscar, from this particular policy issues. And find out more about how you would operate as a council member. So share with us a little bit about how you would be able to work with the other council members. We know that at times there's difficulties with council members, with staff, city manager. So how can we have a smooth running operation? What are some of your skills in that area? And what do you think sets you apart from your opponents?
Uh, well, it all goes down to uh, respect. Working uh, with the current council, you know, we don't agree on everything. Uh, we have our disagreements. Uh, we don't agree with uh, some of, or each other, some of each other's politics. But at the end of the day, there's a sense of respect and same thing uh, with city administration. Uh, there is a level of respect. If you treat others with respect, they'll treat you with respect. As a council member has famously said, it takes four votes to get anything passed. So you need to learn how to work with one another. I have, I guess, uh, uh, in a way, an unfair advantage simply because I have a built-in relationship. Uh, with uh, some of the council members now, since we've worked together either for two years or four years. So you know, it's a evolving type of transition. It's working with others, it's knowing, um, knowing the right people, knowing how to talk to people. Uh, communicating, uh, you know. It's okay to disagree, but disagree respectfully. Um, that means arguing great, but you know, don't take anything uh, personal or don't make it personal. And that's always one of uh, my key things. Uh, it's okay to disagree, but as long as it doesn't become uh, personal. Because today you might disagree and next week, you know, you guys are going to be best friends because you have something similar of something that you want to pass.
Thank you. Aaron, same question to you. If you're elected, uh, how will you be able to work smoothly with others and the administration? What do you think sets you apart from your opponents?
I don't know if it sets me apart from my opponents, but I do come from a belief. That all of us together are smarter than any one of us alone. And I think you have to come to the table with a little bit of humility, understand that you don't have all the answers. That uh, you should come with more questions than answers, I think. I think we. You know, God gave us two ears and one mouth, so I think we should listen a lot more than we speak. I do think it's important to realize that people who have different opinions from your own. Are coming from a place based on their experiences, based on their worldview. Uh, that it could very well be very different, but still you respect where they're coming from. I've often found in my life that where I thought I knew the answer to something. I'd ask somebody else and I'd say, what's your perspective? And I'm getting a very different perspective and a different set of facts, a different set of experiences. And I find that uh, I can be persuaded. So um, I think that it, it maybe it comes with just age. Uh, because I'm a little bit older than my opponents. But uh, the older I've gotten, the more I've realized that uh, that the less and less that, that I know. And coming from that point of view, I realized that uh, you know, I don't have all the answers and neither does anybody else. But together we can come up with a better decision if we work together, if we listen to each other.
Thank you. Ronald will wrap up with you. Share with us your skills, how you'll be able to work collegially with your fellow council members with the administration. And also, what do you think sets you apart from your opponents?
Yes, thank you. Um, you know, my default in anything that I do is to work with others and work with their strengths. Um, so that they can overcome whatever weaknesses you myself have or the other weaknesses of others. I think one of the great projects that I was able to work on um, with um, a city of Altoona. Was a, a parking ordinance rebound, which hadn't been done in a few decades. Because that departments had to talk to each other. Um, being a small city, they needed a liaison for all the department heads to talk with each other. Um, so I was fortunate to have a ride along with a police officer, talk with the police chief. The city clerk in making sure that ordinances, ordinances would adhere to state law. I talked with the city engineer, the public works director. Um, the public safety officer, and of course, the city administrator, similar to our city manager. Um, working with all of them, we were able to pass an ORN that helped the schools. That helped um, the residents when the snow came in regards to snow plowing. Um, in regards to uh, restricting parking, um, so that it was more safe. Uh, for all the residents on any highways or ins and outs on the highway. Um, I think that's uh, some, an accomplishment that I would hope to bring multiple times over on city council. Working with everyone who didn't even know me at the beginning in just my first couple of months there. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ronald, I'm going to stay with you. We'll start a new question. One of the concerns many people have in the city is around the homelessness issue. It's been an issue for many, many years. If you are elected, what concrete, specific plans, what actions would you take to try and deal with this problem?
Yes, um, you know, I've looked at um, other candidates in the other cities. Um, because homelessness is not just about Oxnard. Um, you know, looking at the statements and the policies that other candidates um, briefly mentioned named Misty. Who's actually running for Port Wainimi council. She suggested and commented that there could be something um, that Port Wainimi and Oxnard could do together. Um, Oxnard may have the land and the administrative oversight and Port Wainimi. Where the cannabis revenue that is just pouring into the city could help fund some type of center or some housing development. Um, to uh, hope alleviate that homelessness that's going to be around there. Um, you know, Port Wainimi is not completely separate from Oxnard. If anything, we need to be working with our sister cities, um, obviously Port Wainimi. And with the county and making sure that Oxnard is not getting, um, is not providing all of the financial administrative um, input. Uh, we need to be making sure that because this is a regional and I would argue a national. But um, you know, as someone on council, um, one of the easiest things, um, one of the lowest fruits on the trees that we can grab. Is working with our fellow council members and county supervisors um, to help um, with this.
Thank you. Aaron, same question to you. What are some of your specific concrete plans for dealing with homelessness? Sorry, Aaron.
Thank you. Well, certainly I don't think that that $34 million. Their five-story building in downtown on a half acre of property is going to help. I think it's. Going to be a disaster. That's the homeless transit center that's proposed. I think the folks, when you give them a free house, are going to very quickly destroy. It'll be a slum. It'll destroy. Uh, what we're trying to do in downtown to try and revitalize it. The businesses will be really hurt. You're concentrating the problem in one small area. It is just a really, really bad approach. Uh, what I would propose instead, you know, part of the problem, by the way, is most of these homeless programs are. They're not really designed to fix the problem. They really become a career path. And the goal is to really keep the money flowing and to perpetuate the existence of the program. To maintain income for the program employees. That's what I've seen out there. Now, what I would propose is more of a success-based bounty, if you will. For nonprofits and, and uh, and churches to successfully get people off the streets. I think that if they successfully do that, you pay them a bounty. It's a, it's a, it's a pay-for-performance model. Rather than let's just maintain the existing status quo. We need to treat this as a serious problem. We have huge problems with the homeless downtown with needles on the streets and defecation. And if I had more time, I'd expand on that by paramount.
Thank you. Oscar will wrap up with you. What are some of your concrete, specific plans for dealing with the homelessness problem?
Um, yes, it's a growing, um, where we have started. It's a continue working with the county. Uh, you know, we have a good relationship uh, with the county. Uh, they help us out a lot when it comes to uh, homeless issues, not only us, but they also help the city of Ventura out. And you know, it is, you know, this is a county issue, not just necessarily a city of Oxnard issue. We go to any of the 10 cities in the county, you know, there, there is a homeless issue somewhat of an issue in every city. We are, uh, we are building um, on getting uh, the homeless off the street. Uh, you know, working uh, with the state and with the county. Hopefully, you know. We've got um, some uh, housing for the homeless right there at the uh, Bag of Bond Hotel, right down on Oxnard Boulevard. So hopefully, you know, that's a step in the right direction. You know, we continue to, you know, provide housing for homeless, you know. It is more than just uh, the uh, navigation center that's proposed on Second and B. But you know, throughout the city, you know, have some housing for uh, the homeless. That'll help out a lot in the city, you know. Um, you know, it may not work for everyone, but you know, providing housing for someone that's down on their luck can go a long way and you know. Helping them out long-term to go out, get a job and you know, turn their life around uh, during uh, that dark time in their life.
Thank you. And we're going to move on to the next one. Aaron, this is another somewhat intractable problem at times. Uh, that the community is frustrated about and that's the issue of traffic and parking. So please share with us any concrete, specific plans you have to alleviate traffic and parking problems.
Well, for one, if we get more businesses here in town, more people can work in town. And they won't be, you know, driving as far, you know, going on the highways. The highways are the worst around here trying to navigate the 101. So I think a big thing, you know, give people a reason to work locally, to shop locally. I think will just reduce the amount of traffic overall. So that's, that's a big part of it. As far as, you know, parking goes, I think that when we have new housing developments, you have to require a sufficient number of parking. And what's been happening lately is that the city has been ignoring that. And it's causing problems for existing neighborhoods where, be it where there's clearly inadequate parking available. And those folks need to park somewhere, so they end up parking on other neighborhood streets. And that's a real problem. Now, one solution that I think would at least help the existing neighborhoods. Is, you know, allow them to have, you know, permitted parking or established parking spaces in front of their houses that belong to them. And isn't just available to everybody to, to park there. I think that we need to protect the existing neighborhoods first and make sure that those people who are developing. Uh, you know, new housing or, and, and new places, new areas to live. They have to provide sufficient parking as part of the deal, or else we, we really shouldn't uh, let them build without, without taking care of that. So we need to make sure that we don't cause these negative externalities on, on, on the existing neighborhoods.
Oscar, same question to you. Your solutions to the traffic and parking problems that plague Oxnard?
Uh, thank you. Um, going to any neighborhood meeting, uh, the problem of parking will come up. I would say about 90% of the time in any, any neighborhood meeting you go to throughout the city. Um, parking is a huge issue in our uh, neighborhood. The easiest way to alleviate this is, you know, having better public transportation. Uh, for uh, our residents in the area to get around. You know, um, we will not just here in Oxnard, but pretty much in entire Southern California, we're so dependent on the vehicle. Um, I understand it's a huge concept of freedom for a teenager. But you know, as the older you get, you start to see all the issues that come with parking. Parking's a huge thing, you know, as um, Aaron stated. If we have uh, more local jobs, you know, less people will be dependent on the car. More people would be able to, one, you know, ride a bike, take the bus or even walk to work. And that will alleviate a lot of, uh, a lot of the issues in our uh, neighborhoods. Uh, some of the neighborhoods have two to three families living per household and that creates a huge tension. You have roughly, you know, like six to eight cars per house. And obviously, you know, even. And obviously, you know, even try to be as creative as you want, the cars are not going to fit. The city has tried a parking program, and it hasn't worked in any of like the four or five neighborhoods that they've tried to do it in. So, you know, it, it's a difficult type of question.
Thank you. Ronald, we'll give you a shot at this question as well. What is your specific, concrete plans to help alleviate traffic and parking problems?
Yes, unfortunately, city council was too myopic and, you know, cramming a massive amount of units in a space that doesn't allow and doesn't even acknowledge that people are going to have cars. That's a short-term solution with long-term negative consequences. And, you know, some people have asked me, like, are you gonna be able to do something immediate? I don't know if permitting is the right solution because that's just, why did, they would just live in LA County if they wanted a permit solution. And so, you know, as a politician, you want to say yes. But unfortunately, I think that that's gonna be a tough problem that will only be resolved by better planning in the future. What I'm telling about is looking at innovative ideas like mixed-use development, looking at smaller neighborhoods that are closer to the businesses that people can walk to. It doesn't look like, we can't just be having just a big neighborhood and a big commercial area. We need to be looking at places that people can actually walk, that the public transit is actually gonna go to, that there's gonna be that density by the transit, hot solutions, the ones that are already there and the ones that will be there in the future. You know, that is a tough problem to fix immediately, but I have solutions for the future.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates. We are out of time for questions. We're gonna begin our closing statements, but I think we did a good job of answering quite a few questions in a variety of areas, learning more about all three of you. We're gonna go ahead and start with the closing statements. Oscar, you'll be first. Whenever you're ready, you can go ahead and begin, minute and a half.
All right, well, thank you to everyone who helped with this candidate forum. It is much appreciated, not only for me, but I'm sure from Erin and Ronald, and of course, the community. I am running to be on council again and be representative for District Three because I believe in the continued advance, advancement of this city. Over the last four years, I've demonstrated a very strong commitment to the quality of life for all Oxnard residents. As always, you know, my decisions are always based on what is best for the city as a whole. I bring the necessary experience, devotion, and knowledge to lead our city during these uncertain times. I will continue to work to ensure that the city of Oxnard is prioritizing neighborhoods, delivering on co-necessary community services. We continue our economic growth, and we preserve our quality of life. I am endorsed by Mayor Pro Tem Carmen Ramirez, by council member Bert Perillo. And, you know, I humbly ask for your vote on November the third. But again, as always, I always say this, but more importantly than anything else, please go out and vote on November third. Please exercise your right to vote. Many people have fought for the struggle to grant as many people the right to vote as you can. So, please exercise that right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Ronald, our way home. When you're ready, Ronald, one minute, thirty seconds.
Thank you. And also, thank you to the League of Women Voters Ventura County for hosting this forum. Unfortunately, with COVID, we're not able to interact with people, person to person, as much. And hopefully, when I put this out on my social media and email it out, that more people will know my stance and their differences with my fellow candidates. You know, being involved in this campaign race, trying to be on council to represent District Three, is just an extension of what I've been trying to do on the East Village Neighborhood Council for the past few years. You know, people ask me, like, why are you running? You seem like a new person that we haven't heard about before. You're right. I don't have three campaigns under my belt. I don't have ten years in the newspaper. But what I can tell you is that I'm gonna bring new and fresh ideas, unencumbered by the dated practices of the past, willing and ready to work with fellow council members and always looking for ideas to invest in Oxnard's short and long-term future. I invite you to look further at my policies on our way home for oxner.com. I'm the only campaign that has an active social media presence on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram because I know people look at all types of media, and I'm all out there if you just contact me. So, please vote for me. I'm number one on your ballot, and I hope I'm number one as your choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. A great job, all candidates. I want to take a moment before we wrap up to do a couple of things. First, I want to thank all of the volunteers at the League.
Maybe I can.
Forgetting Erin.
Oh, yes. Sorry about that, Erin. Okay.
I've, I've been overlooked before.
Okay, our last candidate tonight is Erin Starr. Erin, whenever you're ready, a minute and a half.
Thank you so much. So, both of my opponents represent the status quo. Both favor Measure E, the city's permanent sales tax increase that will make Oxnard the highest city tax rate in California during a pandemic, when Oxnard families and small businesses can least afford it, and with no guarantees on how politicians will spend the money. Both oppose Measures F, L, M, and N, the citizen-sponsored reform measures that will bring real transparency and accountability to City Hall, fix our streets and alleys, better fund Oxnard's needs, and produce more jobs for Oxnard's economic recovery from COVID. Before you automatically vote for the status quo, ask yourself, are the roads better here than other cities? Are fewer homeless people on the streets? Are more employers coming to town offering better-paying jobs? You deserve better. We all deserve better. My wife, Alicia, and I see Oxnard as our extended family, and we want each member of our family to have a fulfilling life and a bright future. We live frugally in a modest house in the East Village neighborhood and drive a two thousand and four Honda Accord with two hundred and forty thousand miles on the odometer. We're careful with our money. I will be careful with yours. I bring new, diverse ideas to the council and a set of skills and accomplishments neither candidate offers. I will listen, I'm ready to work for you, and will be honored to earn your support. Please vote for Erin Starr for Oxnard City Council. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates. And before I wrap up, I want to do, to thank all of the volunteers at the League. Betsy Patterson, you met earlier. We have Cheryl, Ruby, and myself, David Marin, helping out tonight. Maddie on the timer. Also, I want to take a moment to put on a short presentation from the League, reminding everybody about voting this November third. So, every registered voter will receive a mail-in ballot. You should have those by now. You can return that through the postal service to secure ballot box, or you can drop it off at one of the voting centers when they open a few days before the election. We give some important information here as far as dates. So, you should be receiving those ballots now. If you don't receive it by October, October sixteenth, make sure you contact the Elections Division to find out where your ballot is. The League recommends that by October twentieth, you return your ballot if you're mailing it so that you'll know it will be received by the elections, and that means by the election night. And if it is received, it'll be part of the first set of county. Now, it's important to know that any ballot postmarked by November third will still be counted if it's received up to seventeen days after the election. That means we may not have actual results the night of the election. We all will have to be a little patient this year because of COVID and wait perhaps several days, maybe a week or two for the final results. There's some resources you can take advantage of. Where'smyballot.sos.ca.gov is a website put out by the Secretary of State that allows you to enter some information. And then you can see where your actual ballot is, has it been received? Is it in the mail? Has the Elections Department already collected it? Votersedge.org is a website where you can put in your address and see all the candidates running in any race that affects you. You can learn about ballot propositions as well. And finally, the League of Women Voters has our website, lvwventuracounty.org. That's where you went to register for tonight's forum. You can go back there to watch any of our forums. By about twenty-four hours from now, we should have tonight's forum uploaded, so you can watch that as well. We remind you, we have a few other forums coming up. A little later at seven-thirty, we have District Six. And then on Monday, we have the Oxnard Treasure and the Assembly District for Sme Valley. Tuesday night is our congressional forum with Julia Brownlee and Rhonda Kennedy. That'll be at five PM. All of those you can register for on our website. So, with that, I want to thank everybody for watching. Want to thank our candidates once again. I'm David Marin with the League of Women Voters. Good night.